All our Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, March 25th at 6:00 PM. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Seeing nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's Office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website, kingstonma.gov. Also, check out our website for additional events or notices. We have a town meeting coming up on April 26th, and our town election will be on May 17th. Candidate nomination papers are available at the Town Clerk's Office, and the last data poll is tomorrow, March 26th, at 5:00 PM. The deadline to submit nomination papers is March 28th at 5:00 PM. I also wanted to make an announcement. The boneyard, that we have, the dog park that's over by the transfer station, the people who started that, the nonprofit, no longer live in Kingston. So they're trying to, or at least two out of the three.
The friends of the.
The friends of the, of the boneyard, I believe, yeah. So they're trying to transition out of that. We're going to have a little bit more information soon. But if anybody is interested in volunteering and trying to keep, you know, the boneyard alive and running and up to date, we'll have some more information soon, so just check back on, I'm sure we'll have some information on our website. I'm sure there will also be posts on Facebook and other social media. More information to come, but just think of potentially donating some of your time or expertise to that in the future. Any other announcements from anyone? No. All right, so we're going to move on to open forum. If anybody would like to speak, just, and then you can go up after. Just introduce yourself and where you live and fire away.
Sure, my name is Jessica Fitzgerald.
Oh, wait, the microphone, you just got to turn on the button to turn it on. Is it green now?
It's green now, sorry.
Okay, good.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Fitzgerald, I'm at 145 Summer Street. So, good evening. I am the Vice President of the Kingston Public Library Foundation, and with me are other directors on the board. We would like to share some exciting news with you and the town. This past December, the KPLF applied for a T-Mobile Hometown Grant. Hometown Grants began in the spring of 2021 as part of T-Mobile's massive commitment to bring 5G to rural America. T-Mobile wants to be part of the community and help small towns thrive. T-Mobile teams up with Main Street America, a nonprofit organization that works to advance shared prosperity, create resilient economies, and improve quality of life through place-based economic development and community preservation, to bring hometown grants to life. Grant applications are reviewed based on their level of detail, community impact, feasibility, and other considerations. We are happy to share that we were one of 596 applicants for the grant, and at the end, we were one of only 25 who won. This Saturday, we will be holding a special event at the library to announce the specifics of our award, including exactly how much we are receiving and how we will be using these funds to improve the library experience for our community. T-Mobile representatives will be with us on Saturday to make a check presentation and to celebrate the vision of our selected project. I believe you will all have been sent an invitation, and we hope to see you there. This free event will run from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and we will have fun family games, a scavenger hunt, and refreshments. The speaking program with check presentation will be at 6:00 PM. We are very grateful for Missy for her willingness to say a few words in the program. I also have for you all a letter from T-Mobile regarding other grants that they have for towns that help first responders, schools, veterans, and youth sports.
Excellent, thank you.
Hi, John Webble, member of the Agricultural Commission.
Rui Santos, also a member of the Agricultural Commission.
Just like to make two announcements. One is April 30th, we'll be sponsoring vegetable-growing gardening event at the senior center right over there, 7:00. It's great for beginning gardeners, or even people who've grown vegetables in the past, they might learn something. I know I will. The other thing is, later on this evening, you're going to accept Karen Johnson's resignation from the Agricultural Commission. I've got an appointment at 7:00, so I've got to run. I'd like to publicly thank Karen for all the years she's spent on the commission, all the hard work and the contribution she's made. Couple, couple points. One, Karen's been very involved with 4H over the years, and she also, at Dusty J Farm, has rescued a number of horses over the years. She's a pretty remarkable lady, and she's done a lot of good for the town, so we want to just thank her and appreciate all she's done. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I'm looking forward to the gardening tips, because if anybody can help me grow tomatoes without losing them to the critters and insects, that would be just great.
Well, we'll see you then.
All right. Thank you, and I think we have somebody online? Okay, I can't see.
Barbara.
Barbara, okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, so I just wanted to take a quick second. I see that the police department budget is on the agenda for discussion again, and I just wanted to ask the Board of Selectmen to please vote in the affirmative and move this request along to the town meeting warrant, so that the voters get a chance to decide. For me, it's like such a simple issue. Town politics can be very difficult. Citizens have to make a real effort to be informed and to show up and to advocate, and Lord knows I'm learning a whole lot about that this year. But the frankly cool part about town politics is that the community gets a chance to decide. So I would ask the Board of Selectmen to please just preserve the best thing about living in a town and let the voters decide. And I'm Barbara Gilde, I'm at 20 Crescent Street.
Perfect, thank you. Was there anybody else here in the room that wanted to speak at open forum? No. Anybody online? No. All right, so we will move on to our first appointment. We have a public hearing, street acceptance for Russell's Pond Road. The residents have brought forth their request to the town to accept their road. They worked with our town planner, Val Massard, to provide the necessary documentation for the process. Val noted that they're aware that there are a series of brick pillar fence posts that were installed within the road layout after the road was constructed in the cul-de-sac, and that there will be a cost to remove those posts. There are some large drainage structures in the cul-de-sac that also need to be inspected. At the public hearing notice, Kingston Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing at the Kingston Townhouse, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass., on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, to discuss acceptance of Russell's Pond Road as shown on a plan entitled "As Built Road Plan Prepared by Votrenau &amp; Webby Company Incorporated," dated May 18th, 1995. Hey, almost 30 years. The plan may be viewed prior to the meeting at the Board of Selectmen office during regular business hours. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move the Board of Selectmen to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are open. Keith, do you want to take us away?
Sure, very briefly, excuse me, some of the owners of the properties up on the street have met with Valerie Massard, our town planner, are interested in having this road be accepted as a town road. Valerie has spent a little time with them, they understand, I believe, the process that has to be followed to bring this forward, to ultimately to a town meeting for a vote. The first step in this process is to have the Board of Selectmen be willing to consider accepting this as a public road, if they're able to, if the property owners are able to make the improvements that need to be made to have the road characteristics be consistent with that of a town public road. So we're here tonight to, and I know some of the owners in the audience, I believe, right? So if they want to speak at all, but they understand the process through Valerie, and again, just to set a level of expectation for everybody, I guess best-case scenario, we're probably looking at a fall town meeting to potentially approve the roads, depending on whether or not everything can get done that needs to get done, just to set an expectation, I guess, so everybody understands the timeline. But I don't know if there's anything you gentlemen want to speak, speak to, and have any questions, comments, or whatever, but anything valuable, did I hit everything pretty well? Look at her, she's going to smart.
Hi, Valerie Massard, town planner. The process, for everyone's sake, is that the first thing we do is have a public hearing. The Selectmen can decide whether or not, based on the petition, this is something that they're interested in considering, and if you are, then you advise staff, and then we will go and try to solicit engineering estimated costs. That's for the benefit of the property owners to then get that information and decide whether or not they're willing to be bettered for that cost to do the engineering. Then we come back here, and you look at it again, and if we're all on board and everybody's okay with the betterment, we can proceed with engineering. Then we come back with the cost that we think it will be, and again, the property owners have a chance to weigh in, whether they want to continue, knowing that there's that cost, and then we proceed with the warrant. So there's a lot of steps, which is why we're talking about, you know, it can take years sometimes, but I don't, I don't think it's unrealistic to say that fall town meeting, if the Selectmen are so inclined, is a reasonable expectation for us to have the engineering and understanding of what needs to be done.
And I think what I would add to that, too, just for folks who don't understand why this is happening, these are, these are roads that are built by developers when the development is first put in place, and you're not, it's not automatically a public road that the town would, would need to maintain and pave and whatnot. They need to petition and go through this process to become a public road. The benefit, obviously, for the residents is that we would be plowing that road from now and maintaining it during the winter, and also paving it every so many years using Chapter 90 funds. But just one note from a memo here that I saw from, from you and Sean, from the Highway Department, just noted that it would be beyond five years from the date of acceptance before we would be able to work them into a paving schedule, depending on what, when the needs are for that particular road. I'm assuming these are 30, 30 years old, and they probably, do you know if they've been paved during the 30 years?
No, they have not, but, no, they're, they're not in terrible shape, they're, they're in pretty good shape. I walked them with Paul Basler and the property owners last summer, and we know that there's probably some work to be done. Sean was able to take the time to pop the caps on some of those structures and take a look, and we know that there's going to be some work that needs to be done, so we all need to do that engineering, figure out what, what it will cost to do that, and make sure we're all on the same page communicating as we go forward. But the pavement itself isn't in, it's not terrible condition, it's just old.
Yeah, okay, and just for the benefit of folks listening, who pays for all that, the engineering, it's residents, right?
It would be bettered against the petitioners that own the road.
Okay. All right, any questions from, from the board? No. Did anybody from the public want to speak? Yeah, please, just go up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Brian Tartaglione, Russell Pond Road, Number 6. I've been working with Valerie on the application, and just to kind of give an update, so we've actually done some work to the road. We've repaired a couple of catch basins, and repaired some cracks going across the street. We have a couple more little issues that might need to be, get, get done, that we're actually working on getting pricing for, and I would look forward to working with Valerie more, even before, say, you guys get any engineering, to see if there's some stuff that we can take care of beforehand. I know that the posts in question have been in existing condition since the road was built, and we might be able to address that issue as well before the town meeting, to remove those and have that corrected as well. Maybe I can contact Valerie and just kind of go over whatever needs to be done, and we can kind of keep working at getting it to a point where we, if you guys take over the road, it'll be something that will be brought up to good standard, and you guys might not have to do much of anything to it, you know, for a good time being afterward. So we're hoping to get the other little issues repaired and get some crack sealing done as well, just to keep the road in good maintenance.
Yeah, we, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd just encourage you to communicate with us, because we don't necessarily want you making improvements that aren't, that would change it in any way, the configuration of the road or the way it was approved.
Sure.
But if you're doing maintenance and things like that, certainly keep us in the loop, both Sean and I, so that we're all on the same page as we move forward.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Great.
Awesome, thank you. Did anybody else want to speak from the public? No. Anybody online raising their hand?
Nope.
No. All right, so would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, do you, anybody want to make a motion to approve or not approve the request?
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the request from Russell's Pond Road residents to move to the next step within the road acceptance policy and procedures.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, thank you. Thank you, Val.
Thanks, Val.
Our next item is a public hearing for a aquaculture license. We had a request received by Jared Wakess to request the open aquaculture license. We had a request received by Jared Wakis to request the open aquaculture license from lease number one. Both Mr. Wakis and Shellfish Constable Dan Cullavan will be in attendance at the meeting. The public hearing notices as follows, pursuant to the provisions of MGL Mass General Laws, Chapter 130, Section 60, the Kingston Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 6:15 PM at the Townhouse, Room 200, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass., to consider the application of Shellfish Aquaculture Lease, Ichabod's Flat Map Number One, three acres, number one. The applicant is Jared Wakis, 15 Village Path, Kingston, with the application to lease Ichabod's Flat Map Number One. The application for lease is filed with the Board of Selectmen's office. With that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move the Board of Selectmen to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Keith and/or Dan, do you guys want to?
Hi, Dan Cullavan, Shellfish Constable, Town of Kingston, 39 Rocky No Cave. This should just be a simple transfer of lease ownership. The current leaseholder decided not to renew his lease, which brought Jared up to the top of the wait, uh, from the top of the waitlist to this position. I think we satisfied all the state and local requirements for applications and permitting, and it's just a matter of getting it signed off so he can get going.
Anything to add?
This is totally separate than the kelp discussion we've had in the past related to Jared.
Yeah, so the two, two separate areas, the kelp and the shellfishing are on two separate areas.
Yeah, he's decided to give up on the kelp. He's not going to do the kelp.
I just, we spent many meetings talking about it, so I thought I would just clarify.
Jared Wakis, 15 Village Path. Yeah, that was completely separate from the shellfish grants.
Sure.
But due to the market.
I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, due to the market, I can put that to the town, too, that I withdraw the application for that spot from prior approvals.
Could just, if I could, just, just a simple email, Jared would be perfect.
Thank you, I'll do that.
All right, any questions from the board? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, do we have another motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the request from Jared Wakis to obtain aquaculture lease number one.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to break just for a second so that we can sign this, because he's going to take a copy of this. So I'm sending down two copies of this.
Okay.
One for us to keep and one for him to take. There you go. All right, so I think we're good. All right, so moving on, number three, discussion of Police Department additional FY26 budget request. Chief, he's requesting that we reconsider the March 12th vote to sponsor Prop 2 and a half warrant article to provide an additional $575,000 for a sergeant, two patrolmen, and related benefits to the Police Department. So, Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, all members, Mr. Hickey, Ms. Tucker. I am asking for reconsideration. One of the most prevalent issues in the recent presidential election was national security. Quote a Gallup poll of October of 2024, the US voters rate the economy as the most important issue of the presidential vote, with democracy, potential Supreme Court picks, and terrorism and national security also is ranking highly. National security ties to federal, state, local, and county law enforcement. I did a live interview with WATD yesterday, as most of the people in the room probably know, and then we shared that interview on Facebook with the concerns that we have with staffing. Once again, we're asking for the town to allow the annual town meeting to make the call or make the determination about whether or not this, this town has the appetite for an override. Funds for free cash and the levy capacity, they're being shipped away, they're all but gone, there's not a lot there. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know that other department needs are being met in an emergency in this coming fiscal year. The town's not going to have a lot of resources to turn to in terms of funds. Nothing during my interview on Monday was, was said that was not factual, disrespectful, or intended to be prejudiced to any member of the board, or any committee member, or anybody in town whatsoever. I'm simply doing my job at advocating for the needs of the Kingston Police Department. I was invited to that interview by Mr. Gorman two weeks ago in this very room to talk about the reasons for the need for this request of the Kingston Police Department. The prospect of a 2026 override bears absolutely no guarantees or commitment by the town that we're going to see any growth, because it's really up to the town meeting. Failing the success of an override for the Police Department, we could literally end up waiting years for any kind of significant growth. This is a workplace safety issue, this is an officer's safety issue, this is something that's on the threshold of a workforce crisis in terms of staffing, and this bears the potential for liability on the part of the town on so many levels. All departments were asked ahead of budget season to find alternative sources of funding to supplement the budget, and I am doing that. There are some grants that are pending, there are some grants that will be opened in the future. I'm going through the application process for federal funding. It's a long and arduous process, but I know that there's some things that will probably be opening up. So I'll continue to do those things as I've committed to doing and that the board has authorized. Through collaboration with our partnership with the Silver Lakes Regional School District, they've agreed to fund one petitional, additional full-time SRO through their D and E funds. We'll be adding one full-time officer at my requests, and it's something that I can't overstate that we greatly appreciate. It means a lot to the growth of the department. We're asked to compare ourselves to other towns. Everybody knows, it's very public, that overrides are happening all around. Ducksbury just had a failure of theirs, I'm well aware of that, and it's something that's becoming a trend to mitigate fiscal crises that are happening in the region. I believe that the town, the town residents should have the right to weigh in. The options before you, in my opinion, are, one, take no action, two, reconsider the vote of two weeks ago, and let the town meeting decide by way of a warrant article, or three, hold a public hearing in a week. Hold that hearing to determine whether or not there is support for it, because I've received a lot of commentary in the positive and the affirmative about this request. Option one would have dire consequences, it's going to basically mean we're not doing anything right now. We'd run the risk of having a delay, as I've previously stated, for any kind of potential growth in the future. Option two, in my opinion, is the right thing to do. I realize that you're absent one of the members, so you don't have a full board with you tonight, so if you chose to defer, I would completely understand. Option three is the most comprehensive approach, to hold a public hearing to determine the appetite of the town. Trust me, I will be here, and folks on that side of the room will be here, as we've been here to support our requests in all the previous meetings. Again, don't take my word for it, listen to your constituents about what they want. Couple of closing comments about the radio interview on social media and the media share. There's been a great deal of public discussion and presentations from us on the department to you as the elected members. We've drilled down to what we believe is the least amount of staffing that we need in order to move forward with growth, and that is one sergeant and two patrol officers. I've received feedback from all of you, and to some degree or another, about, you know, where we are with this request, but the original request is $1.3 million, and the town did not have the appetite for that much growth in that, this short of a period of time, and I understand that. I've had some candid conversations with other committee members about the long-term growth of this department, and the need for what I believe should be 33 sworn members of this department over a five-year period. I don't expect that to happen overnight, because that carries with a very heavy price tag. This is something that we believe is befitting of the size of the community and the call volume, and how much that's changed over the last 20 years, and again, to a approximate population growth of 33%. This goal, in my opinion, should be met, again, with a five-year timeframe. I believe that taking no action is simply irresponsible, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, a quick question for you. So you said 33 sworn officers, does that include sergeants, a deputy chief, so that's, that's all encompassing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And right now, we're at 26?
24, budgeted for 26, two entering the academy.
Yep.
And then a third, potentially, with the approval of the budget at town meeting for the SRO. So that would be 27.
27, right.
So we have 27, maybe not all on shifts and on duty, but we have 27 in our budget.
We have 27, well, 26 now, with the approval of town meeting, possibly 27.
Right.
But right now, the current staffing is 24.
So what we're looking at is, down the road, you want a deputy chief, a sergeant, and, and my missing, and three more patrolmen, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. What was the other, any other questions right now?
I mean, I have a lot of things to say, but do you want to let them go first?
Yeah, sure. Any questions from anybody else?
No, I'm just going to recuse myself from this vote as well.
Okay.
I mean, you know where I, I do stand on putting it on the town warrant, but so, but that being said, I don't think I would feel comfortable voting without a full board, so...
Right, I understand that. So I guess the other question is, it's not really a question, the other discussion item that we have is, we had discussed during our last meeting that there will be some tax levy available.
I don't know that there is anymore, though.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to bring up. So we did talk about that a couple of weeks ago, that, that there was potentially some tax levy money, because the, the regional school district didn't use as much of the budget as we had allocated, and then the Kingston Elementary budget, they were able to come in without requesting any additional money from that, from that leftover. But since then, we have a whole lot of stuff going on. We have some other costs, and that money is dwindling away, including, we don't have them here tonight, but the sewer committee, they need, they're asking for, what was it, 130?
137.
$137,000 towards debt payments for, for next year, from, from the general fund.
From the sewer expansion debt payments?
Correct, right.
Yeah.
From the general fund. So some would be, some of those payments would be handled by users, and then they want about a third of it to come from the general fund, so, and there's nowhere else to come from other than that extra money under the tax levy. We haven't discussed that yet.
Should the board say no, it falls on them to charge the users more, I assume?
Correct, I would, I would assume, unless there's other sources of money. The other question that I do have for you, Chief, is you were talking about federal funds. Hasn't that kind of just stopped? Is it paused right now, all those federal grants, or is it back kind of in play?
I think it's coming back to life. I saw something recently on social media.
Yep.
About the DOJ, and as, as early as April, potentially. So I have to get up on my horse with my SAM number and my DUNS number and all those things you need to apply.
Yep.
It's a long and arduous process, but I'll have that done by, probably by the end of next week.
Yeah. And just another thing to keep in mind, we talked about this before, but we don't have a lot of growth. I mean, for developers to come in and to build a neighborhood, they're going to have to dig wells, basically, right now, or if they have a lot that's already tied into the water, but I don't think there's many of those. So the new development is not going to come fast. Hopefully, some redevelopment at the mall will happen, but we're, we're looking probably two years away for that. And then anything that would happen over at that new transfer station, that's, we're probably a couple of years away from that as well.
Right, should that proceed?
Right, right, and we don't know. So there's a lot up in the air, and Chief, you're right, I mean, there is a lot up in the air. We don't have a lot of growth, so next year, our, the amount of money that we're going to have under the tax levy next year is, is not going to be a lot, and it's going to be shared across all these departments. Now, we all know what happened this year, education for the past two years has gone up a lot, special ed. So there's, and we're going to be talking about this in a little bit, I've got a resolution that, that I'm going to be reading in a few minutes about trying to get more federal funds and state funds for education. There's a huge push to get, especially, as you pointed out, Chief, that there are a lot of towns that are, that are rejecting the overrides, they're not happening, so you're talking about massive cuts to education, police, and fire. I mean, Ducksbury's can be letting police and fire go. You know, Ducksbury's the last place I thought that would happen. My point is, there's a huge push to ask the state to redevelop the funding formulas for not just regular education, but also special education, to get that better funded. If that happened, and we were able to bring in more revenue, we'd have more money for the rest of town government and public safety, and across all the other towns across the state. We're, we're not alone, we're just a year behind. Other people are falling off the cliff this year, we're just right up to it, we don't have much room, much more room to run.
Just, just a comment, if I may.
Yep.
Just my opinion, of understanding a lot of the issues in Ducksbury, I think that they ask for too much and build too much future sustainability in there. You know, that's just my opinion. I knew a lot coming in here, but working with Mr. Hickey and talking to you folks, I've also learned a lot about municipal budgeting, too. In the grand scheme of things, this request is pretty modest, and I know that a future request for an override will be more significant. So I'm hoping that, obviously, if we're able to do this, that this would temper, or, you know, probably reduce the size of anything that we need for that, that second override, if we're included in it. And, you know, the needs of public safety are tied to the needs of the entire town government, but in some regards, are mutually exclusive. So I know that the, I know that the, the school is going to need what it's going to be asking for, and generally, all, overall, in town, they're going to, the town's going to need what it's asking for. There's some mutual exclusivity, because I've used the words before, both here and in the department, and planning purposes and on all that, with catching up.
Chief, I appreciate that you added the five-year, excuse me, goal for that 33 sworn officers, that, that's helpful. You and I had a helpful conversation, I think, yesterday, and it was good for both of us to talk about some of these things. So for folks that are unfamiliar with overrides, in the last 33 years, Kingston has gone and asked for an override from the taxpayers six times. Six times, four of them have failed. So I think it's really important that we, we, which is what I, what we spoke about yesterday. My concern with asking for an override for this year, albeit maybe it is modest in the grand scheme of overrides, my concern is if we ask for an override this year, we will not be able to ask for one next year, that we would be setting up a potential override for next year to fail. I think we are in a position now where we've, we've, we're up at the levy limit, we have no excess levy capacity, to the point where if something happens, all we have is, what, half a million dollars in free cash? That's not much of a savings account. So my concern is that next year, we have to pursue an override, and we have to also prepare for it, maybe we'll fail. Schools will need it. Police will need it. Fire will probably need it. Highway will probably need it. So this coming year, we're looking at a very difficult, challenging year. I'm surprised we didn't need it this year, but we're squeaking by, by the skin of our teeth. Kingston's never been asked to consider an override two years in a row. The closest we came is in 2011. We asked for $279,000 to refurbish an ambulance, and it failed. And then in 2013, we asked for $390,000 for schools, and it passed. So given the history of Kingston, and how we've seen overrides go, I think Ducksbury did everything right. I think they looked at the long term, they presented it early, they had people advocating for it forever, their boards were all behind it, and it failed. So Ducksbury, in my mind, is a cautionary tale. I support your department, I have supported everything that you're bringing to the table. Unfortunately, the finances aren't here this year, but I think we need to be looking at your longer-term plan next year, doing a big jump for next year. And I would have supported adding a patrolman if we have the excess levy capacity, I don't know that we do, but I would have been supportive of that in theory. I, I just don't know what the numbers are right now, and I don't know if, if we can take a look at that before we close out this issue for this evening. This isn't new information, I know that you're advocating for your department, I know you're asking for vehicles for your department, and I applaud the efforts. This has to be collaborative, we have to be able to work on this together, and it's, if we go to town meeting now and ask for a police override, we're putting police over everything else, because it will shut everything else down for next year, and that's my fear.
So, anybody else? So we may want to have a scheduled meeting for next week anyways, to, to talk about the warrant, because there's going to be, I, I don't know that we're going to have this all tied up, I was talking to Keith just before the meeting. We can make this decision by the end of tonight, not for the purpose of considering an override, but just for so many other things that we have on our plate. And I know we don't, Don, you don't want to take a vote without the full board here, without Tyler here. And Kim, I don't think you're going to make a motion to reconsider, so it'd be you or, or Tyler, really, to do such a thing.
I mean, technically, anyone can. Robert's rules say you can't, but nobody, that's not law.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, so I, I was concerned about that, the process as well, so I reached out to counsel, excuse me, last week to find out whether or not we would need to go through to find out whether or not we would need to go through the reconsideration vote, and he said no.
Right.
So, just to make sure everybody's aware of process. My concern, I guess, more in a broad, more a broad sense about, about the warrant at this point is, I literally had warrant articles, a couple of warrant articles coming in today that I've had to draft. I'm waiting for council to provide language to three articles. And Eric and I briefly had a conversation tonight before the executive session about whether or not it made sense to have a special meeting just to try to tie up loose ends on the art and the warrant. If you wanted to do something next week with regard to the override, a more formal vote, if Tyler was gonna be able to be here, you could certainly do that. I'm just trying to, I guess my, I was wondering if the board wanted to meet next Tuesday evening, just to...
April 1st, I think.
It is, interesting date. Just to, to try to, to try to answer some of the questions and make some policy decisions before you, you have to finish up making your formal votes on the warrant two weeks from tonight. But it's certainly just a board decision on how you wanna proceed with that. And if I could, one last thing. You're scheduled to close the warrant tonight. Because there seems to be so many issues, you know, you don't have to legally do that. We can certainly close it either next week or two weeks from now if you wanted to do that. Things just seem to be coming up last minute. We just can't, and the warrant just hasn't settled down yet to really finalize things. So, I leave that to the board to decide how they wanna proceed.
We can decide by the end of the meeting tonight whether we wanna have this, you know, another meeting next week. I, I feel like we probably will need one.
Yeah, I mean, if we need it, we need it.
Right. So, for now, then, I don't think anyone's making a motion. All right, so, we will either make a motion next week or, or the following week or, or not, when we have the full board. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right, next item is Wage and Personnel Board to present funding recommendations.
Jim Sewell, fifty-one Indian Pond Road. I'm the chairman of Wage and Personnel. Lorraine Bucio is online as well. So, in your packets, you were given our proposed annual town meeting packet showing changes in the wage and personnel law, the backup schedules, and what we did also was, I had asked Kathleen Barrett to go through the wage and personnel article and put cost to it, so we had a real good idea. You know, we're very sensitive in terms of the budget, so, you know, we understand the decisions and recommendations that we make. You know, you guys question and try to follow and also come up with some new ideas, but the whole wage and personnel article is going to cost fifty-three thousand eight twenty-nine, forty-seven thousand three fourteen's coming from the general fund, four thousand ninety-one coming from water, and two thousand four hundred and twenty-four coming from wastewater. So, that is the result of some changes we made in positions. It's a result in a two percent COLA that takes effect for this year that was agreed on two years ago with that schedule. And the, and that's all those schedules that you see reflect is the two percent COLA, and some changes. We did change a couple of grades because we had some reclasses, reclassification requests. We also put a placeholder in for the Department of Public Works Director, provided you people, you know, and it passes town meeting. If we didn't do it before town meeting, it would delay the whole process even further. We're also in a transition period with the Treasurer and Tax Collector. So, we created that position as a placeholder based on the recommendations from administration and from our Human Resources Director, and that again is going to, you're gonna have some turbulence over the next, say, you know, year or two, as these positions either get ingratiated into the budget, get established, and then what are we gonna do with the previous positions? Do we eliminate them? Do we reduce them? And those questions. So, there, there's gonna be some turbulence that's gonna come up in the next year or so. But I think it's important that you see what the bottom line is. I did check with Keith Hickey about making sure that that number was in his budget, and it is. So, this is not an additional request, but I just want you to see, you know, what's going on. So, if you have any questions about anything that we've done, and especially that first page, please ask. If you'd like me to read it, I'd be happy to read it for the courtesy of the public. We'll be reading it at town meeting.
I had a couple of questions that people asked me that I just wanted to verify with you. So, on the change of classification for a couple of these, well, I guess more specifically, there's the, the manager role went to a director role, and that's because the, the job itself, the responsibilities within the job have shifted.
Correct. The, the, the good thing about the, the wage and personnel and the committee is that, you know, as things change, and I mean, you know, more responsibilities, services change in the town, interaction between departments change. The, there's an ability to reclassify someone's job, and the, in this case, the reclassification was our Human Resources Manager changed to a Human Resources Director. And it took two meetings, okay, which I, I, you know, is, is the fact that we do consider it extensively. And her job has changed. She is much more involved, especially in, whether it's onboarding people in all departments, whether it is handling workman's compensation claims. You know, the breadth of the job has changed, and Keith counts on her quite a bit, that position quite a bit, in order to turn around and make sure that his things handle smoothly and get done smoothly. So, we did make that decision to change that, and that's our recommendation to you and also to town meeting.
I understand that the HR role provides some HR support to the schools as well. Did, did the schools pay for that support in any way?
Again, where, that would be, I think, a question to the budget administration side.
Just curious.
Yeah.
So, short answer is no. There are no indirect costs that are charged to the Kingston School Department. So, in, you know, in the general fund budget, you know, is HR, our HR, and they work with the schools, Silver Lake's and Kingston Elementary's and middle schools, I mean, sorry, intermediate schools, excuse me. All the health insurance is budgeted for in the general fund, and it is not charged back to the school department either. So, there are no, like, you'll see later on, if you wanna look at the warrant, there's a, there are indirect costs that we identify and charge back to Water and Sewer, because they're separate businesses, so to speak. The school department, the local school department is something a little bit different.
And not Silver Lake, because Silver Lake is a totally different animal, correct? So, the HR.
That's right.
Our, our town HR role does not provide support to Silver Lake, correct?
Not, and they certainly have conversations, but, but the, the support is much more so to the local schools.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
The pay stubs also come from Silver Lake, not Kingston.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's all I had questions about.
Any other questions?
I just had a question about, I noticed that for all the other schedules, the B1, the C1, the C2, there's a purpose to provide a percent cost of living adjustment for all of the positions, but there isn't, there, you didn't subline that particularly for the top. Is that normal? Like Schedule A, do we know what the percent changes are on that, or is it just a total?
Schedule A is the listing that tells you where each position falls and its rate, and changes there, for instance, there was a request that came for a building commissioner zoning enforcement officer. It's about a third of the way down as a rate eleven. So, we had a director of communities, director of community services, help me with the title.
Community Development.
Community Development. We elected not, and that person, I believe, was at a twelve or a thirteen, if I'm not mistaken, and we elected to eliminate that position because of no growth in the town. So, we had to create an inspection zoning enforcement position, and we did at a lower level. So, that's, that was one change. And this is all in Schedule A. The Human Resources Director went from eleven to twelve, as I outlined. Office Administrator Water went from five to six. It did not affect the person. The person's on a personal rate. Basically, what we did that for was that the description of the job that was done during the wage and personnel study kinda changed. Got a lot more involved in terms of what's going on with Water and Sewer, and we were asked to look at that rate, and so that in the case that we had to hire for that position, they were able to come out at a grade six instead of a grade five. No impact to the budget from the standpoint of the dollars. Then again, Public Works Director listed as a grade fourteen. The, we had a lot of conversation about putting the cart before the horse on that one, because we didn't have a direction from the board. We didn't have a direction from the subcommittee, but we also could feel that we do know how long it takes for things to happen, especially in wage and personnel. And we thought if we put a placeholder in place, and then we could outline the position in the placeholder, and we scored the job based on the outline that we were able to put together, that could be presented at the ultimate decision on what that person will do. Because eventually, what will happen will be, that person may hold certain licenses for Water and Sewer, and then we may not need as qualified a candidate in that world. So, will that change that person's rate? So, there's a bunch of still moving parts, and that's what I'm cautioning about, the turbulence that you're gonna have probably in the next year or so. If that position gets voted on, it gets put in. I see benefits in a Public Works Director from talking to, you know, I, I travel to a lot of towns in what I do, and, and I understand why they did it, and I understand their benefits, and I think it could benefit us, but, you know, that's up for the, the subpanel to decide and the board to decide, okay? And then we dealt with the Treasurer Collector. Again, I don't think we want a, I think we want a good person there, from the standpoint of, you know, you get what you pay for. And so, we had a lot of discussion about the rate, and quite frankly, I thought that rate eleven was low. I was advocating for a higher rate. Again, it's a revenue generating position. It doesn't generate revenue, but it collects the revenue, it, it works the revenue, it invests the, it invests the funds. So, there's a lot of direct effect. So, those were the changes to A, that I, I went through this before we came, just to look at it. So, we don't, we don't put any numbers in A. It's just grades and steps.
Right. And that, and we know that all of these positions are already, Keith, just to reiterate it, already in the budget.
Yes, they are. Yep, correct.
And it's the right, you, you feel like your board feels like it's the right time to reclassify, regrade some of these positions we shouldn't wait.
We get reclassifications every year.
Yep.
Okay? And what we do is, the person has a, a ability to come before the board after they go through the supervisor. They can, they talk about their jobs, they, they actually go through and rerate them because of the additional duties, and then we do the same thing at our board. The, trying to remember the exact name of it, but the quotient, the point quotient that we have to use, which was given to us from the compensation study, gets pulled right back out, and all the same questions get asked again. So, anybody in wage and personnel has a, a right to do that, okay? Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't. If we make a recommendation, it's a recommendation for you folks, and then for town meeting to accept the position.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just trying to be financially thoughtful.
And that's also, Missy, while I wanted to make sure that you guys saw the numbers.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I asked for the numbers, which I was, you know, pleased with how they came out.
Jim, is there anything else that you can think of that, that we need to know?
I'm just gonna ask, Lorraine's online. Lorraine, could you unmute, and is there something you'd like to say, please?
Actually, no, thank you very much. Your, your presentation was spot on, and it is very convoluted in, in a sense, but yeah, it is gonna be turbulent for the next couple of years, and we are doing our very level best to maintain consistency along all of the compensation manuals and so forth. But no, I have no questions, and I want to thank you for listening.
Thanks, Lorraine. The, going back to your question, and again, I'm gonna preface it by saying my opinion, not my board's opinion, but seeing everything that I'm seeing. You know, there's a lot of positions we have in the Schedule A that aren't filled. There's also a lot of positions that come before us that, because there's a, a position in Schedule A, can be filled. It is up to the administration and the administrator to bring those forward, based on the needs and services required. In this budget world that we're in right now, I give serious thought about a hiring freeze, and, and put it before the board on hires going forward, because, so that we're not overloaded with administration, and we're not increasing the bottom line when we really can't do it. You know, we try to ask those questions. That is not our purview. Our purview is to treat wage and personnel people fairly. As, as the unions treat people, we try to treat wage and personnel the same. So, you know, that's Jim's recommendation, so please understand that is not my board's recommendation, that is, we've never discussed it, and if Lorraine wanted to chime in, she could, because we're, we have a meeting scheduled with you tonight, so we're in a public meeting as well. So, but that's just my personal opinion. So, you guys, you know, have to, you have a lot on your plate. You're a hundred percent right.
Well, I also wanna say thank you, because we, we've witnessed you in your meetings, and there's a lot of work that's done behind the scenes. You guys really do quite a bit, and, and it affects the, the whole town, all the employees. So, thank you for the, for the hard work. There's not a lot of thanks for, for what you do, but I just wanna say thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Appreciate the compliment. We do get into the weeds, and hopefully so you guys don't have to. But sometimes we will come to you and say, listen, this is what it looks like. So, if, you don't have anything else, I'm finished, and this is gonna be our presentation at annual town meeting.
Might be a good opportunity to let everybody know that they are one member short. So, if anyone's interested in this.
That is correct, thank you.
That is a good point.
This is, talk to Jim. They're always looking for a third member to join their.
Yeah, our third member has, currently would need to be appointed by the Finance Committee. So, it's, speak currently to Carl Pike, or anybody in the Finance Committee, or at the board, at the Town Administration Office.
Or anyone, and we'll redirect.
Right, okay. But we definitely could use the help. I'll tell you where it becomes a problem is that, you know, a tie vote to no vote. So, because there's only two of us on the committee, and we're supposed to be a committee of three.
Do they have to, remind me, do they have to be a resident of Kingston?
Yes, we, we had a committee member who left the town, so she had to get off the board. We did try to talk to the clerk as well as town council, but there's no official written down you got, but their opinion was to us that they should be a resident.
Got it. I know we have, I think the COA Advisory Board, you don't have to be a resident for all of those positions, so I just wanted to check. Great.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the wage and personnel bylaw recommended by the Wage and Personnel Committee, and move the supporting warrant article to the town meeting warrant.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will not be, our, our next item is the Capital Planning Committee to present funding recommendations, but that is not happening tonight. That'll be at our next meeting.
The night, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Please, okay.
So, the next item here is to review citizens' petitions submitted for annual town meeting.
We have not received any such petitions.
Okay.
Okay.
So, no motion is necessary. Next item is a supplemental budget request from Fire Chief for the FY twenty-five, so our current budget. Chief, do you wanna give us the intro on that?
Sure, good evening. We're requesting a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from town meeting to assist us with a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollar deficit within our personal, personnel lines. This past year, we've had an extended, number I should say, of extended injuries that have gone long-term, up to four. One was out the complete year, one was out most of the year, one remains out now. Due to the increased call volume, we've ended up calling people back a lot more than we were, and we've had to fill the shifts to at least a minimum of five. Currently, I'm not filling to the sixth. I'm not filling the sixth position in an effort to save some money, but we are filling to five, and that is absolutely necessary. We've grown to nine-point-four calls a day, which will put us out at about thirty-four hundred calls this year, if that continues, as compared to last year's thirty-one eighty-four, which was growth over by between one and two hundred from the previous year. So, that coupled with the increased time we spend at the hospitals, and all of the things, the challenges that we face. and all of the things, the challenges that we face, really force us, if we're going to maintain this level of service, to fill the shifts at least to the five. So in order to do that, we're requesting the $125,000 from town meeting. And we were able to find $35,000 within our expense budget to move over. The source of that $35,000, although I did take it out of just one line to make it easier, really is offset by a state fire grant of $19,000, a donation that you'll see later of $16,000, and another grant of $3,500. So that was able to, those grants were able to help us affect this transfer of, of funds.
Yeah, go ahead.
Was this a line that we had cut from the initial proposed budget?
So this, this is a little bit of a balancing act when you talk about our staffing. We typically would have six people, but with long-term injuries, you can only pressure people to work so much. So we've backed off for financial reasons to filling to five. Filling to five leaves you an odd number. So if you could picture general, general, excuse me, takes two people to do an ambulance call, five is an odd man out. So we end up calling people back for coverage. What I've done in addition to the adjustment in shift staffing is we've reduced the number of people we recall at a time. So we'll, we'll call back half of the force if we need to. You don't get everybody back. And if we don't get anybody back, we'll, we'll page the additional people. So we, we've tried to work with that as well. But the line item this year for recall, because we had anticipated, Keith and I had a fairly good conversation about it, we had anticipated having six people on shift, which would have reduced the amount of recall. It just didn't happen, unfortunately.
Did we, do we need to adjust?
We did. This year's budget, we brought recall up.
Okay. I meant, do we need to further adjust it? Or we feel more comfortable?
I don't know. My crystal ball's a little fuzzy. I really don't know. I mean, hopefully, and that's a hope, that we get all our injured folks back, and this year looks a lot better. That's, that's my hope.
And, and what happens if the board says no? What, what happens then?
So we continue to drop staffing below. Frankly, I'd probably end up with shifts of three people at times, which means Smith Lane closes.
Almost it.
All right, any other questions? So again, this is coming out of, it's coming out of free cash, right, at, at town meeting. So this goes back to the issue that, that we talked about also with the police chief. So we don't have many teachers injured in the line of duty, but obviously fire and police, I mean, there are some. But I mean, fire and, and police, we are a lot more susceptible. And our free cash is at the end of.
You said we're taking this out of free cash? Okay. Because it's for this year's budget? Got it. Makes sense.
So obviously for next year, we're looking at about a half a million in free cash. If we, there could be some potential, I don't wanna say savings, but where we could potentially have $700,000 or so in free cash for next year. And, and obviously, you know, things like this in the fire and police that, that are hard to, we don't have a crystal ball.
Mm-hmm.
So everybody needs to stay healthy. We're bubble wrap. And any event, if, if there's no other questions, if somebody wants to make a motion?
I can do that. I move the board of selectmen support the inclusion of a warrant article on the 2025 annual town meeting seeking a supplemental appropriation for the fire department fiscal year '25 budget in the amount of $125,000.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. Next up, we have a request from Halton de Libiera for new Class II license, used car dealer license. Circuit Auto Body is requesting a new motor vehicle Class II license. This will be located at 11 Joseph Street Rear. All departments have reviewed and signed off on the application. Keith, anything else you wanna?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Nope.
All right, does anybody have any questions? All right, somebody wanna make a, a motion?
I move the board of selectmen approve the new Class II license for Circuit Auto Body Incorporated consistent with the conservation-conditioned cars stored within 100-foot buffer, long existing condition.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. All right, our next item here is a resolution and vote to support the no cuts to public education bill. I'm gonna read a resolution in just a moment. But before I do, I just wanna enter and read out loud a letter that we received from Jason Fraser is, he is the, I'm gonna see, the president of the Mass Association of School Committee Members, which is a big deal. That's a big organization here in Massachusetts that fights for school committees across the state. But he's also a school committee member from Plimpton to Silver Lake. I don't remember if he's still on the Plimpton Elementary School Committee, but I've worked with him for several years. He's very connected. He works very diligently with our local reps and our federal, our senators and congressmen to fight for education at the federal and the state level. He's, he's very involved. He's pushing for, as I mentioned earlier, how we're looking for the state to, to revamp the funding formula so that we can be better funded. I mean, everybody across the state has seen education skyrocket. The cost inflation, everything else has been going up. But taxes haven't kept up, so the revenues to the towns are, are taking a hit. And hence, everyone's falling off the fiscal cliff. So he sent an email on February 27th, and it said, and he sent it to the chairs of the school committee and select, boards of selectmen from Plimpton, Halifax, and Kingston. "Federal funding is critical for daily educational opportunities for our children. Currently, 10% of Massachusetts public school funding comes from federal programs. Across the Commonwealth, school committees and school administrations are grappling with historic inflationary pressures and increased costs. School districts, school districts are struggling just to maintain level service budgets, as we know. Any decrease in federal funding for public education would be devastating to public schools, students whose futures depend on it. The No Cuts to Public Schools Act that was filed back in February by Senator Markey would require Congress to appropriate federal formula funding for education at fiscal year 2024 levels or higher through fiscal year 2027. In fiscal year 2024 in Massachusetts, the Department of Education provided more than $720 million to support 1,800 K through 12 schools and more than 926,000 students, including $366 million in annual funding for 182,000 students with disabilities, reflecting a 20% of Massachusetts student population, which is a lot. $289 million in annual funding for schools enrolled, enrolling 425,000 students from low-income backgrounds, reflecting a 46% of Massachusetts population, student population. $25 million in annual funding for about 97,000 English learners, reflecting 10% of Massachusetts student population. $1.5 million in annual funding for students enrolled in rural schools, and 812,000 in annual funding to support children living on military bases or Native American reservations." So he's asked us to vote on a resolution that he's gonna be able to use at both at the federal and state level. So I am going to make a motion that we support the resolution in support of increased education funding for Kingston as of March 25th, 2025. And I'll read it, it says follows. "Whereas the Kingston Board of Selectmen acknowledges the critical importance of adequate funding for the education of our community's children, and whereas rising costs in education, including but not limited to special education tuition and transportation, are outpacing available funding, placing Kingston and other towns across Massachusetts in a difficult financial position. And whereas Massachusetts has long been a leader in providing high-quality public education, yet current funding trends threaten the ability of towns like Kingston to maintain even basic educational services. And whereas without sufficient funding, Kingston's public schools will face severe consequences, including the elimination of essential programs such as reading and math intervention, art, music, library, computer education, as well as significantly larger class sizes that would diminish the quality of learning. And whereas Massachusetts is at a pivotal moment in determining the future of its public education system, requiring decisive action to uphold its commitment to educational excellence. And whereas communities like Kingston urgently need sustained support to ensure that all students receive the education they deserve. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Kingston Board of Selectmen urges our state representatives to reassess and reform the current education funding formulas, especially concerning circuit breaker funding, that's special ed, and the existing inflation cap, to better reflect the financial challenges faced by public schools. And be it further resolved that the Kingston Board of Selectmen calls on our federal legislators to advocate for and support legislation such as Senator Markey's No Cuts to Public Schools Act, to protect and strengthen federal education funding, ensuring that our students are not harmed by inadequate investment. And be it further resolved that the Kingston Board of Selectmen reaffirms its commitment to advocating for sustainable education funding, and calls on state and federal officials to prioritize the future of public education, recognizing that the strength and prosperity of our nation depends on the success of the next generation." And then at the end, it says, "Adopted this 25th day of March 2025 by the Kingston Board of Selectmen." So that was a big, long motion. So I just need somebody, and I read it fast, I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, any discussion about the, about the resolution, or the letter, or anything else? Any questions?
I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the downside is.
That, you know, the upside, whether you're conservative or, or liberal, it, it doesn't matter. I mean, what we're looking at is just reasonable funding for education, you know?
Like, if you're going to make rules about this, then fund it?
Yes. Well, that's, that's the problem. It's always these unfunded mandates that we get from the feds.
And the state.
Which is why they're looking at potentially getting rid of the Department of Education at the federal level.
Okay.
What we're pushing for is that the funding continues. Whether the department is there or not, or in what format, we need the funding. And I think that's, that's, that's the big push, and that was the push from Senator Markey. We're not saying keep the Department of Education. We're saying send us the money. Show us the money. We need to, we need to continue to have our funding. Because we do have a significant portion of our funding that comes from the feds, managed by the state. So it comes through the state and comes here as well. So, you know, there's quite a bit. The only thing I didn't add in here, and I've said this many times, and I've, I've said this to Jason, is I think it's critical that we get more of the millionaire tax that was invoked. It's $2.4 billion that was generated, I think, last year or the year before, from the millionaire's tax. But none of that has gone to just regular education. It's gone to pay for free breakfast, free lunch, free college, some other things. But it's not coming to pay for, to help towns with just education. And that was the point of it. And I didn't include that in here, but.
I guess my thinking is, if there are rules that we have to follow from the federal level, then yes, I agree that funding should be there, bind it. Sure.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm just gonna sign this and send this down the road. And then we will forward that on.
And then we just move to close the annual town meeting warrant, right?
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Please.
We have got, so there are three or four articles that are incomplete at this point, waiting for council to provide some, some input. If the board, whether the board wants to meet next week or they wanna wait till April, first meeting in April, it may make some sense to keep the warrant open so we can continue to, to modify articles, because nothing seems to have settled yet.
I thought we could modify articles, we just couldn't add more once it was closed. Is that not the way that you see it?
I think you can, you can, you can make minor, minor changes to articles. I've got, I've got skeletons. I've got skeletons right now for, for a couple of the articles, frankly. And I, it could just be easier, rather than have to reopen or not reopen the warrant at a later date to not even close the article tonight, just over, just over, bypass that agenda.
So do you think we'll have the information that we need by next Tuesday to have that additional meeting next Tuesday? Or do you think it?
Yes, absolutely. I, I should get legal counsel, some responses from legal counsel tomorrow morning on articles. And then really, there's some policy decisions the boards have to make of what they wanna fund and what they don't wanna fund. And if they're, if they're not gonna fund something that's proposed in the warrant now, we can remove it and close the warrant next week, if, if that's the preference of the board.
So does anybody here object to having a meeting a week from tonight, same time?
No, but will Tyler be able to join?
I don't know.
Because I know he has his Tuesday nights that are dependent on our meeting, which means it would really be two weeks for him, probably.
Well, we could, well, he wasn't gonna be here anyways to vote on this stuff, so I'm not worried about the warrant. It's really, it's really the police, though, so.
The quorum is three.
Right.
So.
So we can get in touch with them. But I, I think it makes sense, especially with all the, the, the open warrant articles.
Just waiting for Tuesday to close it.
So no motion is necessary for this?
Nope.
I don't know that closing the warrant is a super hotly debated item. So I think we'll be okay without Tyler.
No.
No, that's true, yeah.
Okay. Next item is acceptance of a donation to the fire department. Fire department received a donation in the amount of $16,183 from Preolo Concrete Forms for the purchase of fire hose. Fire chief is requesting the board accept the donation. So do I have a motion to accept the donation?
I move the board of selectmen accept a $16,183 donation made to the Kingston Fire Department for the purchase of a fire hose from Preolo Concrete Forms.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. All right, we have resignation from the Council on Aging Advisory Board, as well as the Agricultural Commission, as was referenced earlier in the meeting. Received letter from Mary Hayes of the Council on Aging Advisory Board, as well as Karen Johnson of the Agricultural Commission, resigning from their respective boards immediately. You know, I wanna reiterate, and thanks to them for, for stepping up and spending the time that they did. And clearly, Karen's colleagues thought well of her and spoke well of her. So again, I just wanna reiterate our thanks to both of them. Would someone like to make a motion?
Go for it.
I move board of selectmen accept the following resignations effective immediately, Mary Hayes from the COA Advisory Committee, and Karen Johnson from the Agricultural Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, next, we have an appointment to the Kingston's 300th Committee and Council on Aging Advisory Board. We have vacancies. Joseph Cunningham III is requesting appointment to the 300th Committee. They reviewed his request at their February 19th meeting and are recommending his appointment. There's currently nine members of the committee, no maximum members were set.
Good luck with that, Quinn.
Right. And then the Council on Aging Advisory Board has a vacancy. And at their March 11th meeting, Council on Aging Advisory Board voted to recommend associate member Lucy Coletta. So we need two separate motions.
We are now recruiting for an associate member to the COA Advisory Board, since we just are appointing the associate member to the board itself.
I move the board of selectmen appoint Joseph Cunningham III to the Kingston 300th Committee effective immediately through the duration of the project.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And I move the board of selectmen appoint Lucy Coletta to the Council on Aging Advisory Board effective immediately through June 30th, 2027. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Last item, reapportment of the animal inspector. We're required to appoint an animal, animal inspector annually. Kingston's current animal inspector is Deborah Mueller. And she's willing to serve for the upcoming year. We have the nomination form along with police chief's recommendation. Any questions before we, you know, any, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to reappoint Deborah Mueller as animal inspector through April 30th, 2026.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. If you don't have meeting minutes, town administrators report.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of things that weren't on the report. Just wanna make sure everybody knows that I received a notification today sure everybody knows that I received a notification today from Mass DOT that the fiscal 25, Chapter 90, fair share reapportionment provides a ton of Kingston's Chapter 90 money for roads and additional $93,000 from fiscal 25. So-
And fair share is the millionaire's tax.
Yes.
It's supposed to go to transportation and education.
Yeah. Well, we're going to pay the road to get to the school, I guess.
Almost. Maybe not quite.
Recently, recently, some legislature was passed that empowered communities to generate more local revenue by giving the local option to increase lodging on hotels, motels, other rentals from 6% to 7%. Increase local meals tax from 0.75% to 1%, and add a new local option for a surcharge of up to 5% for motor vehicle excise bills that can be dedicated to local stabilization funds. Wondering if the board had any interest at all in exploring any of those as potential revenue opportunities?
I want to pay my excise bill first.
I think we have to. I mean, I think we're in the position where we need to be looking at any and every revenue option. As much as I don't want to increase taxes, the reality is, is that we're, as David Fuller put it the other day, the house is on fire. So let's put it out.
So what we'll do is I'll work with the finance director and anybody else who can provide some support to bring some, so what the, what the impact would be if the board were willing to make some of those increases, and you guys can decide how you want to pursue that.
What was the surcharge on excise tax?
Excise tax was up to 5% on motor vehicle excise tax.
Are you doing the math for your car right now?
Some of that.
Which one?
Yeah, no, that's the problem. I have four grown children, so all their cars are on my policy, and unfortunately registered to me. I feel like-
He's doing the math in his head, is what he's doing. Well, it's going to come from somewhere, so.
No, and so I hadn't brought it up yet, and I wanted to, I wanted to raise it and just have, just have a conversation, see if the board had any interest at all in looking at that. Got a call a couple of weeks ago from a company called Business View Magazine, who has selected Kingston to be part of a TV series they're working on called Best of Massachusetts: A Talent for Building Innovation. The show would be 25 to 30 minutes long and focused on growth, milestones, challenges, adaptations, privileges Kingston's had in the last few years, development, what development means to the community, and what makes Kingston unique from an investment, business, development, tourism perspective. My first question was how much does it cost? Because oftentimes, there's a backend cost. There is no cost. The way they generate revenues is they would send letters out to the Kingston business community saying, we are doing this. There'll also be, I guess, a very short magazine that would be published as well. So I think it's a great opportunity for Kingston to be highlighted in any way possible, in a positive way. I have looped in the Kingston Business Association, KBA, to help with the business side of things, and then looped in Valerie Masari to talk about development. If any of the board members want to start in this show, we'd love to have you. If you're interested, it looks like something that's going to be done in probably late April, early May. I'm trying to provide them the information they need. So it's, it's going to be a neat opportunity. We didn't get chosen for zip trips this year from Fox 25, so we're going to try to do it some other way. The water superintendent, police chief, and I was supposed to be there, I did not go. I'm not sure if the fire chief went or not, but we met with Mass DOT Monday to discuss the final paving of the Main Street Water Line. That work is going to occur during April vacation. They are going to be closing, and I'll have to look to, I'll have to phone a friend here to maybe get some information. I don't know if they're going to be closing both ramps, chief, or just one ramp near Cancun? Do you know?
I think it's one at one time of the day and the other, the other time of the day. It'll check and get back tomorrow.
So, yeah, so we will publish the information on our website, but there will be exit ramp closures near Cancun, off of Route 3. It's going to be a better project because of that or end product. So just the water superintendent was, you know, brought up the idea of doing it during April vacation, so there was no bus impact, and it won't be any night work. So I think everybody jumped on board. Mass DOT was helpful with us. So hoping to get that done in a month or so. We'll let everybody know what the impacts are going to be, but it will be during the day, so there will be traffic challenges during the week of the 21st of April. So.
Do we think that would impact town meeting at all?
On a Saturday?
I'm just throwing it out. It's that week.
No, because they're not planning, they're not planning any weekend work, I don't believe.
Okay.
But we'll make them aware of that, yes.
Just something to mention. I know we were doing work during the election last time, so I just wanted to make sure we had it on our radar.
We had a couple of resignations. A COA driver, Joe Barkus, has resigned effective March 19th. Kevin Carlson was hired as a special, as a police officer. He'll be attending the police academy beginning next month. And lastly, just to remind everybody, nomination papers have to be picked up for anybody who wants to be a servant, elected, as an elected official, and be on the ballot this year by end of business tomorrow, Wednesday, the 26th. And they have to be returned, I believe, by 5 o'clock Friday, the 28th. So there are some contested races. There are others with nobody. So if anybody's interested, it's on our website. The town clerk's office is available and can answer anybody's questions if you want to reach out and talk to the clerk's office directly. But this, this community, like every other one, has, will only thrive with volunteers.
That's right.
Who serve on boards and commissions. So anybody who's willing to participate would be very, would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
And do we have, I think everyone's okay with meeting next week on the 1st. Do you know if the room is available? It is. Good. Okay. So our next regular meeting-
I have a question for you-
Yeah, go ahead.
Before I do the closing of the whole thing.
Sure.
I know that you've been working on this, and I know we've had a lot going on, but if you want, it would be great if you could update people on the regionalization study and just kind of give people a status update on that.
So I'd be happy if you brought that up. I was, there was a comment made last week at the FinCon meeting about where does the regionalization study stand. So I, the day after that, which I think was Thursday, I sent an email out to the town administrators from Halifax, Plimpton, and also the superintendent of schools. I made them aware of what, who our representatives were here with the help of Jill with the schools. And I have not heard back, frankly, from Plimpton or Halifax yet. I will follow up with them. Jill provided me the Halifax, Plimpton, and Kingston School Committee representatives. I don't think that they've appointed one yet for Silver Lake, but stressed to them that it was something we want to try to get going, going on. So.
And we had a grant that we received, well, Halifax received, but it's transferred to us, right?
Yes. A community compact grant was received for the, ultimately from Halifax. And, you know, we want to try to get that work done. And again, as I mentioned, I think, a couple of times in the past, all we're trying to do is provide unbiased information and let people decide what they want to do. It's going to come down to, do you want to save money and lose autonomy? I think that's going to be the basic, the basic question. And that's, everybody's, everybody's opinion's going to be different. It'll be, I assume, some sort of a ballot question at some point in the future. I think the study takes upwards of 18 months, so it's not something that will be on even potentially next spring's town meeting warrant. But we do want to get going on it, and we, I will reach out to everybody. I'm sure they're busy with town meeting stuff. That's why I haven't heard back. But we'll continue to kick that can and make sure we can get that started.
And my understanding was that we would potentially be studying both full regionalization as well as what it would cost if we wouldn't work, if we wanted to separate entirely, although I think that's way more expensive.
Way more.
My understanding was that Plimpton has some concerns, but there could be some sort of contract that was drafted up that they could participate in a certain level by paying for some of their students. There's ways that we can work around having a non-fully regionalized town participate, but it's going to create a little bit of chaos.
The, the organization that we end up hiring, you know, will perform whatever work we identify as a scope. You know, Plimpton has identified, has said, at least initially, they are interested in region, fully regionalizing. We can, we can fully regionalize with just Halifax, if that's what ends up happening.
Sure.
And then we could tuition kids in from, from Plimpton if that's, if that was, that's an option.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll try to figure out that working group, we'll try to figure out what the best scope, scope would be for this study. I'm sure there'll be opportunities to weigh in on, make sure everybody's concerns are addressed in that study, and then hire somebody and let them go at it and see what they can bring back to us.
I think we should explore annexing Halifax into Kingston because they have water capacity.
When we talk about-
That's a joke.
When we talk about the warrant, I know, I know we may not be pursuing a financial audit of the schools, but I just want to mention that it would be good if we just talk about that, because it had come up. And I know that we have no money for anything. But I just want to make sure that we talk, excuse me, talk about the current audits that take place in the schools and the town, just so that everyone is on the same page of what we're looking at. And then as we go into next year, which is going to be probably the most challenging year in quite some time, we just need to know that everybody feels really comfortable and confident with the numbers that we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
That's my selectman comment.
Excellent. Any other comments?
I got nothing this week.
Nope.
All right. So our next meeting is a week from tonight, April 1st, right here at 6:00 PM. And then another meeting the following week, April 8th.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the extra time. I think it'll be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, too. All right. With that, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.